About twenty seconds to filtering. Okay, calling this meeting to order. The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice having been properly given said notice haven't been transmitted to the courier news on Monday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis.
President.
McKenna. Absent during roll call, Councilman McKenna did note that he may be a little late for this evening's budget hearing. Councilman McCray.
President.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
President.
Councilwoman Welch.
President.
Vice President Good.
President.
And Council President.
President.
President O'Korn.
Thank you, sir. This evening, the Plainfield Municipal Council will conduct its budget deliberations on the two thousand twenty-one calendar municipal operating budget. The session is scheduled to discuss the Police Department and the Department of Public Works. So those will be the two departments that we handle tonight. So we'll start with our, our police director, Director Burgess. Would you please begin with your budget overview? Welcome. Speak up just a little louder or.
Unmute.
Unmute yourself.
Unmute. You muted. Yeah.
Got you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Council President and councilmembers. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I thank you for this opportunity to present the Police Department's two thousand twenty budget. The Plainfield, the Plainfield Police Department is committed in providing safe and secure environment for the city of Plainfield. This past year has been very challenging for law enforcement across this country. Our employees continue to work tirelessly under adverse conditions all year while maintaining safety in our community. During this time, great pride was shown in their commitment and continuous efforts, in their continuous efforts. I would like to publicly say thank you to our command staff and to all the men and women of the Plainfield Police Department. We will continue to get through this together. In two thousand twenty, calls for service were down by eleven percent compared to two thousand and nineteen. This was most likely due to the onset of the pandemic and the state of the emergency at that time. However, police response to medical calls had increased. In two thousand twenty, violent crime was down by forty percent since two thousand and fifteen, with overall crime being down by thirty-nine percent within that same time. Even in the midst of these unforeseen circumstances, proactive policing, the ShotSpotter and our camera systems still attributed to these factors. Traffic enforcement remain a priority in the city during two thousand twenty, showing motor vehicle crashes down by twenty-three percent. We will continue to increase enforcement throughout the city for two thousand twenty-one. Some of our goals include recruitment and maintaining our officers to meet the budgeted total and the needs of the department. Recruiting and training telecommunicators to meet the needs as a result of the pandemic. Continue direct patrol in high visibility within our community. Continued overall traffic safety throughout the city. Resume partnerships and positive engagements in our community while maintaining a safe COVID environment. And resume department-wide training while also doing it in a COVID-safe manner. Please keep in mind that adjustments to these areas will be made as we move through this current climate. Now I will address this year's budget. In two thousand twenty, the Police Department was appropriated sixteen million four hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. This total included salary and wages and operating expenses for the Police Department, the Crossing Guards, and the Parking Bureau. The department came within our budgeted amount and managed a nine-point-five percent savings in overtime. In our, in our two thousand twenty-one budget, the administration and I are requesting the amount of sixteen million one hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. This includes the salary and wages and operating expenses for the Police Department and the school crossing guards. This amount shows a decrease from our two thousand twenty budget. There is an increase in the area of salary and wages as a result of contractual agreements made between the city and the unions. However, the amount has been balanced out through decreases made in other areas in the overall budget. Within our operating budget, there are service agreements and maintenance contracts which increased for two thousand twenty-one. These items are vital to the operation of the Police Department in the interest of public safety. These increases were also offset through decreases in the overall budget. Some of the line items to note is line two oh eight communications has increased by five thousand dollars. This amount is caused by an increase of calls for service which required the need of language line. Line two thirty, Q E D, is our software data system which is a major function within the Police Department. It is our records management system for report writing, booking, CAD, the nine-one-one system, and fire reporting. This line has increased by six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, which six thousand is a one-time cost for the Q E D upgrade to the NiBRA system. NiBRA is a state mandated requirement for the purpose of national incident-based reporting system. Line two thirty-three, our computer software line, increased by one thousand sixty-six dollars. We occurred minimal increases this year for our Guardian Tracking System, InfoCop, Power DMS, and our nine-one-one Fire Alert System. These services support the function of the Police Department and are required to meet our accreditation as well as being state mandated. Line two thirty-six, our maintenance agreement line, will increase by twenty-five thousand dollars. This line includes e-ticketing, Xerox copiers, print usage, the Rogers Group Services, LiveScan, and photo system used in our booking process. This line also includes repairs for our police radios and the nine-one-one system and our firewall support, security, and data at our disaster recovery site. Line two thirty-seven, our body worn cameras, shows a decrease this year. We currently have a five-year agreement with one year at the cost of one hundred and three thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Year two through five being one hundred thousand five hundred and ninety-six each year. We will enter into year two in October two thousand twenty-one. The department currently has ninety-two cameras, and this agreement covers the unlimited storage and included a free upgrade of the Axon Body Threes. The use of this, these camera, body worn cameras continue to be an asset in our agency for transparency and liability purposes. This also meets our accreditation and will soon be a state requirement. Line two thirty-nine, ShotSpotter, has increased by seven thousand two hundred, uh, seven thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. ShotSpotter is the technology we use for gunshot detection within our city. This service helps to assist in rapid police response which benefits the investigations. Line two oh four and two thirty-eight are, are ammunition and uniform lines. These increase, these increases are necessary when recruiting additional officers to the department. All of the Police Department's expenses were given serious consideration when budgeting for two thousand twenty-one, keeping the current pandemic and our taxpayers in mind. The Police Department currently has approximately a hundred and twenty-two police officers with four additional to be sworn in tomorrow. Seven officers are in the Police Academy with eight currently in coach training. These numbers are change, these numbers change throughout the year with retirements, resignations, and recruitment. With public safety as our number one priority, we will continue to work diligently to fill all vacant positions within the Police Department. In doing so, we will also be able to effectively address the quality of life concerns within our community. In the two thousand twenty-one budget for school crossing guards, I am requesting an increase in salary and wages. This is to meet the needs of the state's legal requirements on minimum wage, wages. The numbers of guards will increase as the requirements change when schools, with the school reopening and as the COVID-nineteen requirements change. We will also look to meet a fifteen-dollar increase in the future moving on to two thousand twenty-two. In closing, I would like to thank the council for your consideration on the Police Department's two thousand twenty-one budget. I would also like to thank our citizens and their map for your continued support. Thank you. Do you have any questions on the Police Department's two thousand twenty-one budget?
Yeah, I'm sure my council colleagues have questions. We'll start with Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you. Director Burgess, thank you for that overview. And, and one of your goals, you talked about recruiting and retaining, and every year we kind of talk about how there's a deficit in the amount of officers you would like to see versus how many are there. How many officers are needed this year?
So we're currently budgeted for a hundred and thirty-six officers, and we're looking to do our best to complete that goal. This year has, from January last year to this year, has probably been the toughest year in retention. And one of the reasons that I attribute that to is the COVID, which I think caused retirements which may not have initially occurred where some of the officers have twenty-five years instead of staying for thirty, they retire, as well as officers leaving for, you know, additional salaries where agencies have opened up that are not civil service and don't have the same requirements like an agency like ours has as a civil service. So those doors have opened up which were not normally open, but we are continuing to fill those positions. We have an open city list that we have been hiring from, so all the additional officers that we have added are city residents.
Okay, um, so I'm glad to see that overtime remained under budget even in the midst of a pandemic. So I think that's a testament to the great job you were doing in controlling that. I saw that the repair and maintenance and equipment replacement line was overspent. Can you just remind me of what that was for? And my last question is, the police auxiliary budget remains untouched. Can you just kind of speak to why that is?
Yes, um, the repair and replacement line is two thirty-four. That particular line item was, additional funds were added in that line to replace outdated equipment where we added an additional thirty computers to the department. We were, we definitely needed to update where they were years beyond their life expense, expand, expansion. So that's where that expense came from.
Okay, and the police auxiliary budget, can you just speak to why that budget remains untouched, but yet there's still always requests in that budget?
At this point, we have not officially closed out the use of auxiliary. So that line item was there. If there was a need to be able to bring them back, we were looking at reviewing the safety factors. I spoke about that last year, how it relates to the Police Department. As far as with COVID throughout the year, we just haven't gotten to that point of really evaluating that time, but we have not used that in the last several years.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilwoman Davis. Council, Councilwoman Welch?
Good evening. Good evening for this opportunity. Director Burgess, I would just like to commend you on your leadership and during this time of COVID, keeping us safe, keeping the officers safe. I think what we see here with this budget shows a complete loyalty to understanding how necessary it is to keep things within limits. I think that the resources that have been given, the information that has been provided is clearly a commitment and a loyalty to the city of Plainfield. I just want to thank you.
All right, Councilman McKenna.
Yeah, Director, thank you for the, the overview that you gave, and apologies for my delayed sign-on. I had something prior that ran a little bit over. You know, my big question is going through the, the headcount. You, you mentioned just a moment ago in answering a question to Councilwoman Davis that we're budgeted for a hundred and thirty-six officers. How many, how many do we have now currently?
Um, that amount is currently one twenty-two. With, and we have pending retirements that are taking place as well, but we also are hiring four new recruits tomorrow, as a matter of fact, and we have eight in the Police Academy, and then we also have, what is it? Yeah, and seven, I'm sorry, eight that are also in training and seven in the police. Or vice versa, I look at my numbers. Yes, eight in coach training and seven in the Police Academy, I'm sorry.
And, and how many pending retirements do we have?
Um, currently I have two, three.
Three.
That will be completed by September first.
Of what, of what? Oh, September first of what, what ranks?
I have a two, two lieutenants and one sergeant. One will be done in June, and the other two are September first.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna be, we're fourteen down now plus three more, so we're seventeen down. You, you know, the thing that I, that I noticed looking at the roster is that we had a captain retire, a sergeant retire, and an officer retire. And we had fourteen resignations. That's a lot. That, that, that scares me a little bit. And I know of a handful of those who became officers in other towns. So, you know, it, it concerns me a little bit to see that sort, that sort of change. I get that we've got four that are gonna be sworn in tomorrow, and that's great. And, and whatever the numbers were, eight and seven new and in the, in the academy. But, you know, as we all know, no fault of their own, they're not as, as helpful in policing for a while because they've got to get in and, and be trained and, and, and supervised and, and learn the ropes and everything. So, you know, fourteen resignations on top of, what is it, six retirements, that's twenty. That's, that's a lot, that's a big loss in one year.
Yeah, and one of the things, as I explained in my opening, that we, during the midst of COVID, doors were open to agencies that are not civil service, which then allows officers to negotiate salaries with the, the current steps we have. It can make it difficult where if a town has, can be right next door and have six steps versus our steps in our city. Money does play a factor at times, and steps play a factor at times. Those are things that are contractual that I have no control over, and we can just do the best we can to continue, you know, within our city and continue to staff.
What, and, and what are, or do we have any plans to look at the steps? Because we do have an inordinate, inordinately high number of steps compared to other municipalities. And if that creates a problem for us being competitive, that's, that's important to look at.
Well, that would be something during contract negotiations, which is pretty much not in my hands, but, you know, suggestions, you know, suggestions based on, from what I'm hearing as to what causes some of the officers to go to other agencies. You know, I have made those suggestions that these are the reasons that I'm hearing. But I, the contract negotiations go to place with the union and the city when that time comes.
I mean, you know, my, every, every time we do these budgets, and, and, and this is my second one as a councilperson, but I was on, on Seaback and observed before, the Police Department's always short. Police officers and working to get them to the academy and get them in and get them sworn in, get them trained. And then to be short as, as we had been in trying to get that number up, and then to lose twenty. Retirements aside, I know those occur because they hit their max and they want to go, you know, to the shore and down south or whatever they want to do. God love them after all their years of service, but the resignations are concerning, and the administration should be concerned about that and, and look at the root causes of it and see what we do. If, if we're not competitive, then we need to understand why we're not competitive because that, that's, that's a problem. I mean, and I would think you feel the same way if you're struggling to keep your head count up there, but.
So I'm just gonna interject and say that Director Burgess and I actually have sat down and had this exact conversation as we prep for union negotiations that are upcoming towards the second half of this year. And the step issue, the number of steps, that, these are all things that we've fleshed out and we've strategized about. So rest assured, we're, we're aware, we're, we have our eyes wide open and going into this contractual year where, you know, we're, we're looking at what we can do. You know, we have, we also have, have limits, financial limits that some other cities or places where cops can go might, might have less constraints. So we're, you know, we're never gonna be able to outpay some of our competitors, but we are looking to do better in the future, and we are strategizing about that.
And as I said earlier, you have to keep in mind that the pandemic opened up doors that are not usually open prosecutor's office, to agencies that are not civil service. Most of those times, you'll have officers there and they will stay for thirty years at a time, making that limit of, of movement slower. In this time, people were retiring, and these, those agencies became short right next door to us as, as North Plainfield or, you know, towns, several towns over. So this is what has allowed that, and if you have one officer who leaves, who then tells somebody else what they're comparing it to, then that's what then sends that, that ball a bit rolling. Where in years past, these same opportunities may not have been available to our officers. And let me just say this, Plainfield is not the only city that's experiencing this. There's other cities that are comparable to Plainfield who are going through the same issues when it comes to losing officers, and some of them are losing them to the same agencies that we're losing them. So rest assured, it's not just isolated to Plainfield. We are, we are experiencing this for a lot of communities that look just like ours.
Well, as, as, as is often said, when, when, anytime some of us compare things that we do to other cities, we're told we're different. So I, I don't really know what these other cities are going through, what my concern is and what my job is, and my colleagues at Plainfield. So I'm concerned about our loss of these, you know, individuals that, if we want to be selfish about it, costs us a lot of money to put through the academy and to train and to get up to speed. The knowledge that we, you know, had invested in, aside from their dedication to the, to the job. So I think anytime you invest that kind of money and, and lose them, we need to be worried about that.
And I totally understand and appreciate your concern, Councilwoman McKenna. I, I concur with what you're saying, and I completely understand and appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm, I'm all good, Council President.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Uh, Council President, I do not have any questions. I will also commend Director Burgess on her presentation and the work that they're doing. And just say that maybe the council needs to find them some more money.
Thank you. Finance Chair McCray?
I'm Council President. I'd just like to say to Director Burgess, congratulations on a job well done. I know that you are facing a lot of challenges in recruiting and retaining officers, which is a challenge in many communities that we hear, but you're doing a great job. And I just want to say, keep on doing a good job. And you have the support of at least this councilman as you try to deal with the recruitment and retention issues that you face. That's it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your support.
Vice President Good?
Sorry, I thought I was off mute. Director Burgess, good evening. How are you? One thing about when your last, your colleagues may have already said everything that you were thinking of saying, and, and that's all, that's all good. That's, that means that everyone is listening and have gone through all of our notes in the budget. I want to echo with Councilwoman Welch and Councilwoman Ransom and, of course, Council, the Chair, McCray, that even through the challenging times, the Police Division has done an awesome job, and with you at the helm, I'm pretty sure you have made women across the county very proud by the work that you have done. And I, I wouldn't want your position to turn nothing in this world because I'm pretty sure it's challenging. And we appreciate everything that the Police Division does. I've said it years ago, and I will say it now. We appreciate everything you do. I do, however, have one question, and that question would be about the ShotSpotter. One question and one question only. Has there been an increase in the locations? And are the current ones going to remain in place?
So the answer is no, there hasn't been an increase in the locations. We currently still have the same ShotSpotter locations that we've had from its onset. I will say that it, it has been working and it's been working well. There may be other locations that we could use ShotSpotter, but I know there has been times that there may be, there may be other avenues that we may look at with shot detection. So at this point, no, there's, there's no increase, and we haven't thought to increase it. We want to make sure that what we have for the city is the best quality because ShotSpotter, there's technology that we could probably utilize, whether we update with ShotSpotter or with something else in the future.
Thank you so much, and again, we appreciate you. That's all for me, Council President.
Thank you. Just a, just a, just a question and maybe a comment or two, or a comment and a question or two, Director. So first of all, I echo all my colleagues in the job that you're doing. I, I do realize how difficult the job is, and to, to navigate us through the year of COVID, we're just grateful for your service and the service of all, all the men and women on the force. I mean, they're, they're first responders and, and have been since the inception of the virus. And, and regardless of what needed to be done, they stepped up to get things done. I also really appreciate the collaboration between the department and the community in the instances during the summer when it was a lot more civil unrest. Police were actually almost marching with us to City Hall. We, we felt at one with, with our Police Department, in a sense, in that they were there to protect us and, and, and have order rather than to, to, to cause agitation like we've seen around the country. You know, so, you know, I'd be remiss not to mention just everything that's going on and throughout the country and, despite the pandemic, how many instances of unarmed black men or women have been killed by police? And we're fortunate in New Jersey and in Plainfield to not have one of, well, I can't say the whole state because there, there was one incident, but we're fortunate not to have those types of situations occur. But we know no one is immune from a bad decision or, or a mistake. You know, not a mistake like mistaking a taser for a gun, but, you know, it's still a very difficult job. And, and, and we've performed admirably. So I guess the, the, the question is, from your perspective, what, what thought do you or, you know, the other officers in the rank give to what's going on in, in America these days to, to, to make sure that, that, that we're, we're, we're modeling how we want other, other police departments to treat our citizens?
So first of all, let me say this, and I appreciate your comments and your question. One of the things I want to say first is that getting through two thousand twenty-one was not an effort of just my own. This effort was with our command staff. At the time, the four captains we had, one captain now retired. They worked tirelessly together in order to get this agency what we needed to do during COVID. And then at that time, COVID then turned into civil unrest, you know, across the country. But it had some effect in our city with the, um, with protests. Um, Captain O'Brien, Captain Newman, Captain Williams and, um, Captain Guarino at that time, they got us together through those situations. And what I would like to do is acknowledge each and every one of them and say thank you for that because that's many meetings, many updated policies, uh, requirements that we had to put in place and maneuver and get them this year. So again, I appreciate them. And on top of that, I want to commend the rank of lieutenants and sergeants as well, because without them, these things could not have been done. We went from at times being the heroes to being, uh, you know, looked at as the bad guy. And I watched these officers take it in stride. Um, I watched them do everything that they can do to make sure that our community was still safe during those times, whether it was marching with our community, um, and, or just being on the outside protecting what was going on or, uh, making sure that everything was safe. Um, with that being said, to answer your question, and then let me just also acknowledge the men and women, meaning the police officers and our civilian staff that were essential at that time, they all worked tirelessly because what most people may not know is from that time of March until August first, essential personnel could not take any time off unless you were sick. We were on a state of emergency, so you worked every day. And then on top of that, when civil unrest started, officers had to do overtime so we could cover those events as well. So I, I commend each and every one and I will not take that on my shoulders. That was an effort throughout this whole agency that everyone did their part. To answer your question as how we do something to model, um, this agency uh, under Director Riley, and I mentioned this last year, with our accreditation and our policies and procedures and to update them. We were already ahead of the game, um, uh, teaching and training and putting these policies in place for this agency in order to have a model of what things should and should not be done, what, what it looks like. So this is why at times when things are happening in, across the country and then there's things within our agency, our officers can be very sensitive to because they know that they do the best that they can to model these policies and procedures that are in place. And they're held to those standards. If they are violated, then we have to deal with those issues as well. But we have a good internal affairs unit, I feel. Um, we are governed by the Union County Prosecutor's Office and we, you know, do the best that we can to, uh, make sure that our officers are held to that higher standard. And I hope that, that can be a role model, um, for any other agencies around us.
Thanks again, Director, for your service, your time and, uh, for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
All right, um. We'll now move to the, uh, we'll, we'll move to the next presentation. We'll have the CBAC chime in at the end of this presentation for all their questions for both departments. So if you don't mind, uh, Director, you don't have to have your camera on or anything, but just, just, uh, stick around until we're done this other portion. Okay. So will the Department of Public Works please begin their budget overview?
Yes. Good evening, Council President Hockaday, Vice President Good, distinguished council members, CBAC Chairwoman Bright, uh, the Commission, uh, Cabinet colleagues that are watching, dedicated division heads, general public, and of course, the Honorable Mayor Matt. Okay. As the Director of Department of Public Works, I am pleased to give you an overview of our present calendar year twenty twenty-one operating budget. Uh, the Department of Public Works is comprised of seven divisions with an overall twenty twenty-one operating budget request of six million five hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred and one dollars for six of the seven divisions, with the seventh being a newly created parking utility with the requested parking budget of four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Our goals and objectives in all Department of Public Works divisions is to continue to enhance the quality of life relating to all services provided by the department and to ensure that the health, safety and welfare of all employees when it comes to social distancing and wearing a mask in the office or the field are adhered to. I'm going to start with our Division of Public Works. From the onset of this pandemic, has continued to provide vital and essential services without interruptions such as curbside yard waste collection, street maintenance, potholes, crack ceiling services, citywide, uh, street signage, crosswalks, striping, uh, street sweeping, the kind of street sweeping removal, removing approximately seven twenty-one tons of debris from our streets, removal service and snow and deicing services throughout the winter, which we have one of the worst winters in a long time. Property abatements and boarded up some property. Our Division of Signal, and I'm just going through the seven divisions, give you a little overview. Will continue services and providing routine maintenance to city-owned, uh, traffic lights, mistletoe light poles, pole fixtures, decorated streetlights and working with National Public Service electric to process, repair any outages of the twenty-two thousand seventy-seven P S N G owned light poles, uh, citywide. This is all part of Mayor Matt's Light Up the City, a Plainfield initiative. Signal will also be assistant, the Division of Public Works with replacement of faded stop signs citywide. As needed, to date, we have seven forty-seven stop signs citywide and anything faded, they will replace them. Our Division of Engineering will continue applying for grant funding to offset project costs within the capital budget. We have projects such as a newly synthetic turf field, multi-purpose field coming in the near future at Rushmore Playground. And we'll be milling and paving all and reconstruction roads through the co-op with NJ D L T funds, C B D grants, funding this summer, this spring, summer. As I try to go through everything with the, uh, seven departments. Vision of Parks Recreation will be opening parks citywide commencing Saturday, May first. And we'll continue providing virtue and in-person activities, programs with our pools scheduled to open this summer. Plainfield Summer Youth will be trained and hired as seasonal, as lifeguards and park monitors. Recruitment is done through the high schools. Okay. Announcements and postings are provided throughout Union County for these positions. Our Division of Inspections will continue to address property maintenance, quality of life issues within every inspections and through the task force. At the end of March, the Division has reconvened interior certificate of compliance inspections. All inspectors are required to wear P P E equipment that was provided to them prior to entering homes. Civil compliance inspections for sales and rentals will be conducted. In our senior center, throughout this pandemic, staff has been coming into the center to ensure they meet the needs of the seniors. Food boxes are delivered to members' door. Staff has continued reaching out to seniors, enrolling them in the county testing programs. Zoom classes are held, weekly exercise, art classes. Uh, staff keeps in contact with seniors via the tablets and the seniors again has a Mr. Day. The workers have been working every day trying to make things work for the seniors. And our newly created parking utility, the most efficient and effective way to provide municipal parking services via parking system, which means delivery of municipal parking services to the public by a single government entity charged with the responsibility of managing, planning and operating all aspects and functions such as enforcement, collection and repairs on and off-street parking services on a daily basis. And just want to note too, that in terms of our budget, we have reduced our budget by like a hundred and twenty-two thousand in terms of salaries. Uh, so we're trying to walk a tight line with the budget and, uh, I'm ready to open for questions from anyone.
All right, we'll, we'll start with, um, Councilwoman Welch.
Good evening, Director Dabney.
Good evening, Councilwoman.
This January, we saw what was almost thirty-six inches of snow within a matter of two or three days. Sir, your commitment, your team's commitment to getting out there and getting the streets paved so that people could get to work, so that our first responders could get to those who were in need. I thank you. Cutting the budget at a time like this is just been essential to allowing us to be able to keep the whole city's budget down so that we can see what will be potentially a zero percent tax increase. The online services that have been provided from the seniors to our kids has really kept people motivated and given them something to look forward to. I am excited to know that our parks and our pools are going to reopen this year for twenty twenty-one. Director Dabney, I thank you. You definitely have my support, which I'm sure you have the rest of the council support, but you can count on me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Welch.
Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you. Um, Director Dabney, in your budget for the Director of Public Works, um, there looks to be a lack of professional development usage. Can you just explain why that is?
A lack of, what? I'm sorry.
Um, the professional development line, it seems to be underspent, um, for your office. Can you just explain why that is?
Yeah, I guess with the pandemic, yeah, I guess I didn't take some, some of the courses, whatever it is for development that you're referring to.
Yes, um, not just last year, but it seems to be a pattern that for your office, it isn't really utilized, but yet, um, you're still asking for the same amount this year.
And, and, and Councilman, we said I may need more, but I'll take that because I'm used to product certification now that I have with your code up on it. So it'll be utilized the way you should do it.
Okay. Um, also in, um, the City Yard, the Public Works, um, budget, um, under their role maintenance goals, um, I don't see street striping there. Um, so I just wanted to know, is that a priority for twenty twenty-one? Um, because as you know, that is a huge, uh, priority in the first, well, that's a huge need in the first word, I should say.
And, and by the way, yes, we're, we're definitely, because we put that in for last year. So yes, it's there and we're going to make sure that happens. That's all part of our infrastructure work too. Striking.
Okay.
Yes, we're definitely, that is definitely something that's going to be inclusive, yes.
I also want to commend the City Yard on their goals and objectives because it was very detailed. Uh, they broke it down by sections. It was very easy to, uh, just follow and understand. Um, for the Division of Parks and Recreation, um, just the suggestion for their goals and objectives, they always have percentage increases. So they want to increase programming by X amount or X percent, but they don't have base numbers, uh, in their accomplishments to really measure against. And that would be really helpful and really understanding and getting a fuller picture of the great work that we do because we know that it's great. But it would just be better to see the, the numbers and the data to back it up. Um, and that is all I have for you tonight.
Okay, your response to that, we'll make sure to do that. And as we get through this pandemic, we'll make sure we touch upon all of that, if you mentioned, in, in terms of recreation.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Good, Vice President.
Director Dabney, probably one of the most impressive years that I have seen from Public Works was twenty twenty. Uh, the record number of snow that we've had, like Councilwoman, uh, Welch stated, uh, I mean, awesome. You guys are always awesome about what you do. You're consistent. Um, one thing I'm very impressed with now also is the, the turnaround time of the complaints and things that have been brought to your attention, especially for me, um, have been, uh, addressed almost immediately. I like that and I'm pretty sure, uh, the people in the city like it as well. And I'm sure my colleagues would agree. Uh, we're not there yet, but it's good to know that this summer, they will be somewhat heading in that direction within the CDC guidelines, uh, 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 some type of normalcy with our youth having access to the pools, uh, the way the senior center was open to make sure that those seniors that needed lunch or whatever they needed, uh, their needs were met. Plainfield rocks. We rock. We get the job done. Thank you, Director Dabney. I appreciate you and your entire staff. That's all, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mills-Ransom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Dabney, on behalf of many of the senior members, uh, residents in Plainfield, I want to thank you. And you know why? Because you get an email from me just about every other week for something that's not right in their neighborhood, at their homes beside them, across the street, et cetera. Like Councilman Good said, your response time is very, very good. To me, it's amazing. I have people who are just so pleased with this administration in terms of violations and inspections and whatever. And even those who don't want to do what the inspections say, I've had the opportunity to be able to talk to them. As you have said to me, this is all about safety. And someone may have called and our people go out and so therefore they get the summons. And I know that behind the summons, there are court dates. So I know that there are some who say we still have work to do and that is true. But one of the ways that I know, and it's, it's been very helpful, is that when people reach out to me, I reach out to you and then the work is done. So hopefully, uh, I know I've had calls from all over the city, from each and every ward, and you responded to all of those. So hopefully, the other council people such as, uh, Councilman Good and myself are just bringing those complaints to you and they too would see that the work gets done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCray.
Good evening, Director, and thank you, Council President. Uh, Mr. Dabney, I just want to echo a lot of what has been said. This is difficult times. And many times your department gets blamed for things that are totally out of their control, but yet still you rise to the occasion to combat and remedy a lot of that situations which your department is blamed for. Um, during COVID, I know it's difficult to get out and inspect homes and, you know, have compliance, but your staff has done a remarkable job. Uh, I'd also like to say to you, you know, it's amazing how you can keep your sanity with all the quote insanity that goes on around you with all the things that you're torn and, you know, asked to do. And people look at you and say, well, why haven't this got done? But you're doing one Herculean job of keeping our city clean, keeping our roads, um, passable during storm times. And also, um, with code enforcement, although some folks might want to say that code enforcement is not enough, but you have to deal with the law. And a lot of people need to understand that. So congratulations and I thank you for your service. And I thank all your, all your staff and all your frontline workers because your frontline workers out there also making sure that we can have a quality of life here, like.
Thanks, Councilman McKenna.
Yeah, I, I, sorry, I'm going to break with, uh, the flow here and actually ask questions about the budget. So I'm, I'm curious, uh, Director Dabney, about, first of all, I do want to add about the snow removal. I, I think you guys did a great job. I particularly liked a little, it was a little different this year than, than in winters past, the, the post storm cleanup in some areas where you came in and, and cleaned up some, some piled up snow that was, that was affecting parking and things like that. So I, I do appreciate that. I would like to know and, and forgive me as I go through these questions because I got ten minutes. I don't, I'm not, I don't intend to be rude if I cut you off, but I got to cut you off and get to my next question. Um, street sweeping, you had eighty-five percent of targeted mileage hit. I, I don't know what I I don't know what that means, you know, you could, you your targeted mileage could have been ten miles. But I do, I I do wanna know, we purchased a lot of s- street sweepers, but I'm not seeing them as much as I would like to see them, and we talked last year, you were gonna have a plan together with signage and opposite side parking and things like that. When when will we have that plan for regular street sweeping, not just in certain areas?
That's a good question, Councilman. Uh, the pandemic hit us, so things changed a little bit, know what everything we're doing, and we're working on now, seeing how we're gonna do the yardways. Plainfield, as you know, the tree-lined city, right? Tree-lined streets everywhere, and everyone has quite a bit of yardways. So to have put a real effective, city-wide plan in place, when I'm working on that to see I can adjust certain yardway schedules. And right now, we have two sweepers in our fleet, and to have a real effective plan in place, now I want you to hear this. So I'll be putting that boat down the road, we would need another two sweepers to make it work the way we wanna make it work, in our fleet, to make this work. But they still need yardways, and that's what it's worth. Once we get that set the way it should be, we'll work on it, but everyone has major-sized yards, as we all know, large yards and
I gotta cut you off there, so we won't have a full city sweep until we get two more sweepers. I got that. When will we be striping crosswalks? Because we talked about that last year. I get we had a pandemic. The pandemic did not stop everything. A guy with a strapping machine can socially distance from the rest of the people at the yard, so.
And and I was saying that it counts to me, David, so don't get hurt, but yes, this, we're gonna start the springing some, doing striking crosswalks. Yes.
Okay. Why do we have a a two hundred thousand dollar increase in salaries? And I know, I I don't wanna discuss the increase over last year's appropriation. I wanna look at the increase over what you used last year. That's your baseline. What you used versus what you're asking for is a two hundred thousand dollar increase.
Where you, where are you looking at that, Councilman? So I'm asking.
On your budget.
If I go to the overall budget for my
Last year, you spent two uh, two million three hundred thousand. I'm gonna round it up and down. This year, you're asking for two million six hundred thousand. That's three, that's that's, if you take in where I rounded off, you're about two hundred thousand.
Are you looking at the entire, all my divisions? What what's the number you're looking at? I'm trying to, what's this number?
I I take that back. I was looking at yours, but it's two hundred and twenty thousand if you take what you spent last year in the Public Works section. This is line one oh one. Two point three three million is what you spent last year, and the mayor is, you asked for two point six four million. The mayor submitted for two point five five million, so that's two
I just wanna, I thank you, Council President. Um, there is a, there are contractual increases, one point five percent that the city has no, we we have, and salary, so everybody should have gone up at at a minimum of one point five percent their entire salary line item.
So all of that is one point five percent increase for
Most of, uh, the the large majority.
Two hundred and twenty thousand is for that. Okay.
And what, well, what's the total number? We could do the math, right?
To two point five, two point five five four.
So, yeah, so. So the majority of that is contractual increases.
Contractual increases, okay. Why do we have, why do we have two uniform budgets? We have a repair and replace uni- repair and replace uniform and new uniform, and then we have new uniform, and we total about almost forty thousand.
Uniform is just totally different. You have, you have, uh, you have cleaning, it's cleaning, and allowance, and then there's a purchase of uniforms. Two different things, that's all contracted.
The one is, so the repair is really cleaning, and the other uniform is for buying new.
Allowance, right, and then you have the books.
Okay. At what point do we need a s- a full-time city engineer?
We just don't need a well, it's 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 more cost-effective this way as opposed to paying benefits out?
Paying benefits out than having the escrow money?
What, for health insurance and everything? I think it's it could, it's more cost-effective this way, Councilman.
And and at what point? At what point it's not? So at what point is it not as cost-effective?
At what point is it not?
Yes.
Um, you got, I don't understand what you mean, but at what point is it not cost-effective?
Jersey City does not have a city engineer. Is that what you're telling me?
Jersey City is a city of class, yes, it does. It's a larger city, so you're looking at something.
At what point do you need a city engineer?
They do, they do have an engineer, a couple engineers. However, they do have a co- contracted out engineer work as well.
That's my point. At what point do you need a full-time city engineer?
Well, well, that's something we'll look at down the road, administration, when it's time. If if we need one, we'll go for them. Right now, we don't need one. It's more cost-effective this way. That's my response.
So you don't know? Okay.
I do know, I just gave my answer.
Two more, two more questions. The certificates of exemption. The certificates of exemption, there's four hundred and some, four thirty-six, I think it was. Um, when will those all be closed out and be actual?
That's a good answer. We we started, we started that, at the end of March, we started doing that. We started going into the holes, now doing internal inspection. So we're working on that. They're doing like three to four a day, based on the size of the unit, okay, and based on any violation that may exist in a property. So we're working on that right now, so it's gonna take a little time.
That's over a year.
Over a year for what? It's going to speed up. See, you see, that's, you're just basing on those numbers. As time goes on, there's some place, place problems they'll go into that may not need uh, to be inspected. Hopefully, a lot of folks did things in good faith, and you as a politician know that, a lot of folks should think, put things in good faith, and most of the pro- problems we talked referring to. So we'll we'll get there. We'll definitely get there with everyone. And the good thing about it, you know, with the sales, we did a good job with this, I think, with that, because we kept sales going and rentals, so people could live. Everything that do is exemptions.
I agree, you kept them going. The process was horrendous, but I agree, you kept it going. The uh, real quick side note, where did, where does the golf program take place?
Where does it take place?
Yeah, where where do they do the golf program?
Well, we're working on, I I've got to find out the place. I can, I'll give you that answer. I don't know exactly where the where the golf is taking place at right now. I would think that
Is it a golf course, or is it just golf skills at a field?
Well, it's gonna be like just some teaching from training on how to play golf, you know, because the coach on playing, it's not like it's going to have a golf tournament.
I can answer that. It's done at uh, West Nine. It's the the first tee program.
It's all connected to the first tee. That's what I was getting at.
Yes.
Thanks, Ron. I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. All right, uh, Director Dabney, um, I do wanna add to the chorus of individuals uh, commending your department on the work that it did. Uh, also being first responders, uh, making, getting us through the pandemic and this massive, massive snowstorm. So uh, wh- what I really like about your department is you you step up when it, when, when, when required, when it, when you need to, and the response times have been phenomenal. So thank you for your responsiveness, uh, and making us all, as council people, uh, shine when questions or concerns arise. Uh, you're, you and your department has has been adept at handling things. Doesn't mean that we don't have uh, work to go, uh, but I, but I do know, you know, the reality is things are going to happen in city. You know, we are gonna see litter uh, occur. Uh, we we're gonna have problems with coordinating with with PMUA at times. We're gonna have, you know, but but the bottom line is what happens when, you know, when we get those complaints, you know, we take action. You know, and I I just, um, I'm I'm like, I'm grateful to have you in that role and hope that we can continue uh, with that. Uh, my my only question i- is is somewhat related to Council McKenna, is it with the concern with the certificate of of exemptions uh, in terms of how it it uh, coordinates with the budget, you know, I don't, I I don't know if you feel like you need extra staff, uh, or do do people need to do overtime in order to get some of these things done? Would that be helpful?
Yes, that's a good question, and that's why you should line up in a budget of five thousand. I mean, that can be increased in time, you know, but we're trying, that's what we're gonna have to do. Sometimes we'll work from Saturdays and work a little overtime, you know, to get to where we need to be. And this was all due to the pandemic, not because inspectors were negligent in their work. It was just because of, you know, what happened with the pandemics, we weren't doing interior inspections. So in good faith, like you're supposed to do, what we did was we didn't wanna stop sales or rental, because folks had to live themselves. So, you know, as you know, that's that's where we are right now. So yes, we're we're looking to see, there's a, there's a funny note there, yes, we can use more, and yes, and over time, once the economy gets better, everything's better, we do need a few more inspectors. Yes, we can use a few more, for the property making side to do things that we need to do, yes.
Okay.
And but, and I just wanna say this too for everybody, and I appreciate everything all you said. Because we know with everything we do in life, no matter what occupation is, there's always room for improvement in everything we do, right? And that's what we try to do to make sure we just emphasize that to everybody. We can all improve in everything we do. We never get complacent to what said we're doing a great job. Every day, we wanna do a little better. And that's what I, that's what I emphasize to all our division heads and our all our staff. So, and that that's just something that I want to stick in their heads and everything. And with our inspectors, we also wanna make sure we let everybody know, we want to educate, warn, and enforce. So, because some folks sit in the milking pot this year, to make sure everybody knows that, that's what from time to time, whether to tell people they're doing wrong. We can, anybody could hit someone with a summons, or fine, but the goal is try to educate, warn, and enforce. The goal is to have less summonses written, you know, so we can see we're doing something, and making progress. So that's what I'm saying. So everything we do, we wanna make sure that we continue to 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 educate, warn, and enforce. And it's, or maybe wrong, there's someplace you have to enforce all the time, because they just never learn. There's a lot of folks out there that really, you know, wanna do better, and we are working in conjunction with the PMU a lot of ways to try to make things better for everybody. So I'm just saying, so we we we're gonna get there. I'm optimistic that we're gonna get there together.
Thank you. Sounds fair. Did I get it? Did I go to every council person? I think I did. All right. All right, so we'll move to the C-Bag now. You can uh, you can start with uh, Director Burgess, since she's been kind enough to wait, we can get her portion over. Do you have any questions for her?
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Director Burgess. This feedback did have some questions for you. Let me get back to them. The first question was, someone emailed me this morning, this question, what is the role of the police captains?
The police captains are all bureau commanders. Um, they're over the the four bureaus that we have. We have our patrol bureau, we have our administration bureau, and we have our records bureau as well as the, um, why am I forgetting one? Our criminal investigation bureau. So they're responsible for overseeing those departments um, within our agency.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have a question on budget line one oh eight. And that's budget line for coach-training officers. It increased this year uh, to thirty thousand dollars, you're asking. Last year, the actual cost was two thousand eight hundred fifty-nine. Uh, you requested twelve thousand, you actually spent two thousand eight fifty-nine, and this year, you're requesting thirty thousand.
Yes, those numbers are based on the amount of um, when we're hiring our officers. The coach trainers, that is a contractual agreement as to what they're paid for that amount, but with the uh, with the recruitment comes additional coach training. Last year, it rolled over into the new year that when we hired
Yes, something's going on.
Someone, someone's got, giving you an echo.
I think it's Teresa Taylor.
As I was saying, that um, doing, doing, being that we have more uh, recruitment going on, that's more coach training that occurs, and those officers that do the coach training um, are paid an additional stipend for that, and that is a contractual situation. Last year's recruitment, um, we had classes that went in. Uh, due to COVID, the classes were supposed to start in January and to start, I mean, I'm sorry, they were supposed to start in May, they were going to Essex, and then in July, they were going to um, Union County. Um, COVID kinda put that uh, to side for May, so we started late in the year around August. So which meant our group that we were hiring for January, um, they, that went into twenty twenty-one. So those coach-training officers will not be complete until this June. So it's the way it falls around as the retirement goes, why one year could be lower than the other year, depending when the coach training starts.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question they had was budget line one in, and that's comp time. Uh, we understand from Ron that um, contractually, that comp time is sometimes paid out in cash. We were wondering why there was a budget line for comp time. He explained that it was paid out in cash. For some officers, when you start your new negotiation, is there gonna be any uh, thought to maybe not having come time, pay down cash?
Okay, that would be something you would have to, you know, talk to the administration about. That's not necessarily something that I can uh, negotiate um, that situation, but based on the way that it is and the increases that are in there, why you see, what you see has to do with um, also with the retirements and the resignations, because at that point, whatever's in their bank, they're going to be paid out for that. Um, so over the years, without even that movement, that those numbers continue to increase. Um, as of now, it is what's in the contract, so we have, the city has to honor that uh, that agreement.
Okay, and the last question, and I know we had this question last year. Um, what someone asked, uh, they wanted to know the crossing guards, the crossing guard budget, could it be moved to the school board budget? And if if not, why not?
Um, well, as far as I can i- is answer on the public safety side, I can't answer anything for the school board. Um, and again, that may be something that is um, to be discussed with the business administrator, the mayor. Um, however, for public safety, um, I feel in this aspect that it would be safer for them to be under the police department. They get their training through the police department um, as well. One of the avenues we were looking at, and I spoke about this last year, was uh, maybe um, tweaking or looking at a better system in order to do the school crossing guards, and making sure that we are doing it in the most efficient and effective manner. But um, I would say for public safety reasons, the police department is one of the places that it should be. Um, not that it's always in stone, but that is a concern of mine, because we would still have to, in this case, the officer assigned over that unit to oversee it. We have the training that gets done from the supervisor in that unit that comes out of our administration bureau. Um, and they basically, you know, see to the safety of our students, you know, going to and from school. But again, your question would be something that um, that I'm gonna still look at as a public safety area.
Thank you. That would all we have for uh, the police director.
So go right ahead uh, to ask questions to the
Yeah, we uh, we really didn't have anything for inspections. I think it was one question, and it was pertaining to the longevity salary. Uh, we noticed that uh, some uh, employees receive longevity pay. Um, and is the yearly increase to longevity pay? And is it something that is offered to all employees? Or is it, was it something that was grandfathered in and not being offered any longer? If you could just explain the longevity pay. Yes, uh, I'm sorry, Director, I need that for you.
Okay, uh, longevity is based on years of prior going back. I mean, everybody does get that now, contracting from going back in time, based on years of service. Some folks might have twenty-five, thirty years, and they receive longevity for that. But others going forward, folks gonna get longevity. I may ask you the answer to that, for longevity. Basically, years of service, that's, you know, the longevity going back in time.
Okay, that was, that was it for you. I just wanna say that, since I've been working at your department is doing great, you did an excellent, you guys did an excellent job during the snowstorms that we've had. Since then, I've been working from home, and I've seen the streets, the the streets we could come by and sweep my street more than ever. So they are out there, and they they do come by.
And and right now, uh, chairperson, right, what we're doing right now, that's what we're doing is spot mechanical street sweeping in certain areas, not that needed really the most. We're trying to hit certain areas of town. Right now, we're just not leave collection. We're trying to work to where we can do a full-scale street sweeping of program. But right now, you know, we wanna make sure that everyone can still put their yard waste out, so get complaints, but I've gotten calls from Councilman Davis to everyone. So we're trying to do spot mechanical street sweeping throughout the cities, you know, where we see litter. That's just unfortunate. We don't all put there, that it doesn't fall from the sky. We're trying to educate folks what they shouldn't do, right, and do it right, so yes. So, and thank you for those comments. Thank you.
You're welcome. We appreciate it. Thank you. That's all we have from the C-Bag, Council President.
Thank you, Chairwoman Bright. Uh, we'll now move to citizens' participation. Total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments. If you wish to be heard, uh, as in our meetings, hit the hand icon to be recognized, and you will be unmuted. Keep your name and address for the record. Each speaker has three minutes. The floor is now open. Uh, let's see, uh, Jackie Robinson.
Hi, everyone. I'm actually a member of C-Bag and had questions that came up in response to some things that were said during the presentation. So is this the time that we would ask those?
Sure. Any member of the public can do that, including a member of the C-Bag.
Okay. Um, one of the questions that came, that, that, what things that came up was when, uh, Director Burgess was talking about the, uh, police academy. Where in the budget is the cost of training for the recruits in the police academy?
So let's do it like this way, Ms. Robinson, although this, this is public comment and not necessarily question, though. But if that's all you have, you know, I'll ask you to add, you know, just, if you have a few questions, list them. See if we can get to them.
Would you rather that I just submit them in an email through the C-Bag process and have them answered that way?
I mean, that, that'll be fine, too.
Okay, I can do that. I can do that. Okay.
All right. We'll give written, written responses to, uh, your questions.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, this is CP. You can be heard. Uh, yes.
So. Do I have to give my address?
Yes, name and address for the record, and speak, speak a little louder, because it's a little faint. Volume's not loud.
I, uh, I am Carmen Seade Pile. I live at 1414 Highland Avenue. And I just want to, I, I hopefully, um, I can, I also work with, um, Director Dabney, so I can speak on it, correct? Even though I.
You're a member of the public, so you can speak. Just go right ahead.
Great. I, uh, again, I can't say it enough, the way you guys said it regarding the snow removal. The snow truck came up and down my block a number of times, and I don't think it's because I live here and he wanted me to get to work. But, um, it, the, the leave, the leaf removal, I mean, this, it's been a great, he's done a great job. Um, and, uh, Director Burgess, our block, Highland Avenue, thanks you so very much for putting, for, first of all, coming quickly when we had these cars racing down our block. And Director Burgess, immediately, thanks to Councilwoman, where is she? Um, Joylet Mills Ransom. They immediately put the traffic monitors up, and it has slowed down because people tried to avoid a, a traffic light, so they come through my block. And we have now, I think it's like five little kids that, uh, the parents want to play outside. And, uh, we had a warm day, and Director Burgess, the kids were out there playing, and, uh, they were enjoying it, and I took a picture, and I will be sending it to you. But they thank you very much for, uh, slowing down the traffic. The only thing is when, when those monitors leave, the traffic comes back. But, you know, I know that you're working on it, and I do appreciate you. And that's it. Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Harris. Name and address for the record, please. Unmute, unmute yourself, Mr. Harris.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Victor Harris. I'm on the C-Bag committee, but I just had a general comment. I know the town has done a great job over the last couple of years of skimming and repaving roads. But, uh, I can tell you, as somebody that walks these roads very, very frequently, without curbs, uh, the edges of the roads, uh, particularly in areas where they're at an angle, uh, begin to erode away very, very quickly. And I just think that some consideration should be done to put curbs on the agenda at some point, because if you don't, you're gonna just have to repave them more frequently without the curbs, giving the protection to the, to the integrity of the, of the pavement.
Duly noted. Thanks for your input, Mr. Harris. All right, uh, I'll send you a watch. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Alcina Welch, and I'm at 508 Church Place. I want to thank, uh, Director Dabney for the hard work that's been done to come to Church Place. I can remember, I've been living here for over 50 years. And I can remember that nobody ever came down Church Place. We had snow everywhere, and we would be dazed trying to get out, digging ourselves out. So I want to thank you for, Church Place has definitely been addressed, and things look a lot better. To Lisa, I thank you for the police. They do come down occasionally. We don't see a lot. We don't need them a lot, which is a blessing. But I do want to thank you that the police do visit Church Place. I see them driving through occasionally, either church or either division or fifth. So, uh, you know, we've, we've done a rec, we've done a lot, Director Burgess, you've done a wonderful job, and thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, seeing no more, uh, for public comment, I'll entertain a motion in second to close public comment.
Both.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Council President.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.